Good evening. Welcome to the City Council's special meeting for January 22, 2018. I will call to order that meeting. The real call is Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Mayor Proton Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hodrick?
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Here. All present. We have one discussion item this evening. But before we get to that, I'm going to ask if there may be consensus from City Council to move public hearing ahead of the discussion item so that we can... I have at least ten cards that represent residents or non-residents that wish to speak, and I don't know about you, but I think I'd rather hear what they have to say before we start the discussion.
Yes.
Agree with that.
It looks like we have consensus to do that. So this is an opportunity that I'm going to allow residents and non-residents to come speak. I was going to be somewhat liberal this evening with time, but I have ten cards here from residents and non-residents that wish to speak, so that's at least a half an hour if we allow three minutes. So we are going to stay firm to three minutes. Please get your box together so that you can do it in three minutes or less. So first, yes, please come to the microphone when I call your name, and then please just give your name again if you could. Thank you. So first, I'll call on Nancy Morrison, who wishes to speak this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Slater and councilmembers. I am Nancy Morrison, and I am the Executive Director of the Troy Community Coalition. I have been in the prevention field for seventeen years now. So we have been implementing proactive prevention programming in the schools and the community, making a positive impact in this city. Prior to being in prevention, I was in treatment, and I counseled individuals with substance abuse issues, and I saw how difficult it is to overcome an addiction. And I saw my clients relapse time and time again, and of course, I would never wish that upon anyone. I have concerns that medical marijuana might be the next big tobacco where people get rich and other people lose their health. We know that marijuana is considered a gateway drug, and it also has a high potential for abuse. I talked with numerous people who said that they did vote for compassionate care, thinking if they ever had a loved one who was in hospice, a doctor would be able to prescribe them some pain relief right then and there, and that's not what is happening here. So I always, of course, have our youth at mind, you know, on anything that happens in the city. So I would like us to protect our children, think about our children and grandchildren. We don't want to normalize marijuana and have them think that it's no big deal. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Wade Fleming, who wishes to speak this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thirty-eight twenty Victoria Court, Wade Fleming. I've served on this City Council for about nine years, currently serving as County Commissioner. You're in a difficult position. I mean, I don't envy where you are. You know, you have tough decisions to make regarding these medical marijuana facilities. But based on what I've read and seen and talked to a few people, I just want to weigh in and say if I were in your position, if it does come to a vote, and I know you have some options, I would be voting to opt out, okay? And that's my two cents for what it's worth. I know you've got a lot of information to try to get through, and I just pray that you'll have wisdom and make the right decision for Troy and all of its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Wade. Next, I'll call on Jim Warpatinsky, who wishes to speak.
Hi, yeah, I'm Jim Warpatinsky. I've sent emails, I've talked to somebody individually, so I won't take long. I harken back to when Brian Kishnick came. He coined the phrase, "What kind of a city do we want to be?" And I asked, "Do we want to be known as the marijuana capital of Michigan, or do we want to be known as a place that's safe to raise kids?" So I want you to opt out. This is not about economics, not about filling empty buildings. It's about, as Nancy said, not normalizing marijuana from the standpoint of our children. I don't want the kids saying, "Well, the city of Troy thinks marijuana's great, so we might as well have at it." That's the wrong message. As far as the medical marijuana, those folks are always going to be able to get it because some of our cities around here are going to opt into this, probably because they have financial problems and they think this is going to be a windfall, which it's not, but they think so. So the people that need it, they're going to still be able to get it. So that's not going to be an issue. You talked the other night... I wasn't here last time, but, you know, I watched you. You talked about putting a tight ordinance in. Need I remind you of the monster garage, the storage facility on Rochester Road, the billboards now? It's hard to write a tough ordinance. You know, the people that are into this business, they'll find a way around it. So please, protect our children and vote to opt out. Thank you.
Next, I'll call on Anthony Nowakowski.
Mayor and council, I'm hoping that you will opt out, and the reason being is you talk about tobacco, and then tobacco became a, if you will, like a drug and such, alcohol. We talk about marijuana, secondhand smoke, that's going to affect people. We have drugs in school right now, and I can remember back years ago, more like twenty years ago, there was an opportunity in Athens High School. I could have put a boy away that was seventeen years old, and I made a mistake. They gave him the option to move to Florida, and they would rip his record clean to give him a break. That was, let's see, maybe twenty years ago. And we have drugs in Troy, Athens. And if I would have manned up and said, "No, I want the young man prosecuted," there may not be drugs in Athens. So please, vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Nowakowski. I'm a resident here in Troy. Been living here since nineteen seventy-eight. I am a cancer survivor. I believe the council will do the right thing to opt out of this. I feel that medical marijuana should be only prescribed by the doctor, and it should not be a business. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Ted Daniels, who wishes to speak.
Sorry, guys. How's everybody doing this evening? My name's Ted Daniels. I am not a resident here. However, I am working very closely with one of the local businesses. A little bit about my background. I have fifteen years of law enforcement. I actually ran a narcotics unit for six years outside of Baltimore, Maryland. After fifteen years, vested my retirement, went active duty United States Army. Deployed to Afghanistan in 2012, I was shot four times. Stationed in Colorado at the time, and I saw what was happening in the industry in Colorado. So I got into the cannabis protection business. I was the first one in the country. Was featured in Playboy Magazine, HBO Vice, Twenty Twenty with Diane Sawyer, CBS Morning Show, New York Times, USA Today, you name it. I was the guy doing it. Here's my thoughts on the whole opting in and opting out. It's already here, guys. You have upwards of seventy-plus caregivers. It's unregulated. You regulate this industry, you have control, you have a way to wrap your hand around it and make sure things are done the right way. You know, what we're specifically asking for is, and I understand everybody's concerns, there's an opioid epidemic right now in this country, and this is the one way that a lot of states are battling the opioid epidemic. I was brought in by LA City Council to help them write the mandates and regulations for the city of Los Angeles. I worked with the state of Pennsylvania. I'm currently working with the state of Delaware on their recreational program. Most problems, and again, guys, I operate coast to coast, are at dispensaries. That's where you have your issues. Cultivation and processing facilities, many people don't even know they exist or where they exist. This isn't a situation to where this stuff's going to be getting out into the public. They're going to be secured. And I don't want to go over my time. I just want to lay one last thing. I was raised in a blue-collar, hardcore Republican family. My dad never smoked marijuana, not once in his life. He's seventy years old. He's been battling cancer for two years. He called me last week, says he has four to six months to live. Asked me, "Teddy, is there anything that you can do to help me sustain?" I flew out to La Jolla, California, where they make the best CBD oils in the country, and they shipped it to my father. It's non-THC, okay? Here's a man with four months to live who is actually looking at this now to help keep him alive. If Pennsylvania had moved a year faster, maybe he would have had something to help save his life. So please consider opting in, at least for the processing and cultivation facilities. Thank you.
Next, I'll call on Amy Brown, who wishes to speak.
Hi, thank you. My name is Amy Brown, and I'm a resident of Troy and would also like to be a business owner in Troy. I'm going to kind of just tack on to the points because I don't think this is the right place to debate the value of cannabis as medicine. I do personally believe in it, and obviously, state law now makes it legal and available. In addition to growers and processors, I've applied for a license for the safety and compliance under the MMFLA. These labs are designed to keep the product that the state has decided is legal, to keep it safe, get contaminants, test the potency, make sure that what is going to be available is safe for people to use. Secondly, if Troy is going to consider opting in at some point, the way the license is built, it's the people, the license to do the business, and the location. Those three things are tied together. If Troy has not opted in and I open my business in another city, I'm not financially going to be able to redo the whole application process, pack up my whole thing, move, find new employees, and all of that. So there is some level of urgency on the timing to make sure that people can get settled in the right home for their businesses. So you don't have to opt in for dispensaries or things that do bring some of what concerns cities, but there are these other licenses available. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Joanne Preston.
Good evening. Joanne Preston, longtime Troy resident. I came this evening to get information about what you are considering doing to our city or doing for our city. I guess it works either way. I am wondering what it is that the city of Troy and the residents who live here and support the city will get out of opting in to this situation. I've already received at my home a ten-page magazine catalog. I haven't gotten my seed catalogs yet, but I did get my catalog so that I can order, with an envelope attached, by the way, anything that I want in the cannabis line so that there are services out there. I don't want them in my community, I don't want them in my shopping center, and I don't want them near our children. And I believe that you, more than anybody, recognize that the people who live in Troy are all our children, whether they're an old person like me or they're a little person. We're all children of someone. And I think keeping safety by having regulations that are enforceable in place is a nice goal. However, not inviting it in in the first place is an even better goal. It'll save you a lot of work, it'll save our police department a lot of work, and it'll keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Jim Notten.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Jim Notten. I live at 1979 Lister Lane. I've been here in Troy for about twenty years now. I'll keep it short, very short and sweet, given the interest in time tonight. I moved here primarily because this is a safe city, good schools, a great community to raise family kids. And I have to say, if I was making that choice today and Troy were to opt in for expanded marijuana facilities, I might choose a different community. I think it's very important for us to keep our brand as a safe city with good schools and solid community, and I don't want to tarnish that brand on the social experiment that is marijuana grow. I firmly respect those who are conducting business and want to conduct business in the legal manner around this product. Michigan has spoken. Please, just do so in a different community, okay? Let other communities stub their toes on the grand social experiment, and then we'll see. We'll see how it plays out. Thank you.
Next, I'll call on Dave Rudoy. Just to make sure if I got that correct.
You actually pronounced it perfectly. Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for taking the time to really examine this issue. I really do respect the careful thought that the city of Troy is putting into this, and I definitely don't think it's an issue that should be rushed into. I do believe that... I'm, by the way, I'm an attorney out of Royal Oak, Michigan. I represent quite a few people that live here in the city of Troy. I think there already has been a significant amount of investment here in the city in the industrial buildings into marijuana caregiver grows, which obviously, we're not discussing here today, but whether you choose to opt in or not, those are here. So that's something that the city is going to have to deal with either way. The MMFLA did not change the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, and it did not change the rules for caregiver grows. The city's already given these people certificates of occupancy. I know there's many people that really poured a lot of money into those buildings in hopes, based on how the city was treating them before, and giving them certificates of occupancy. Obviously, they had hoped that the city would be opting in, and because they're not getting in trouble and not getting busted, and there's no issues there, they would hope that they would be in line for that. I think there's a real risk the council may take by not acting because... or acting in too harsh of a manner towards opting in. And this is something we've seen in Detroit, we've seen in Lansing. That's really causing the city's a lot of problem, which is voter referendums and voter initiatives. If the city chooses not to act, these people that have poured millions of dollars into their buildings could band together, and it would not cost a lot of money to put this, their own version of an opt-in law on the ballot. And the way votes have been going around the state, in Lansing, in Detroit, in Detroit it just won, and it's causing major problems for the city of Detroit. They had a referendum and an initiative repealing the law. So that's a real problem because that really takes it out of your hands to properly regulate it. And I'm in favor of the city of Troy opting in, but doing so in a manner that keeps the bad actors out and lets the good actors in, and limits it, and gives the city the power to properly regulate it. And if you choose not to act or choose to opt out, these business owners, you know, it's happened in a lot of cities around the state, are going to put their own language in there. But if you pass a good opt-in law with good regulations that keeps the bad actors out, that's not something that's likely to pass if it's put to the people of the city of Troy to vote on. So I do believe, you know, that it's in the city's best interest to pass their own law where you guys are in control of who's going to be allowed here, and allow the good actors in, the people that you want in, and make a situation where there's not going to be one of those ballot initiatives, there's not going to be one of those referendums, and keep the power over regulating this market within the city council. Thank you.
That concludes those that have signed up to speak on a card. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Please speak.
Please give us your name.
Good evening. My name is Mark Druck. I've listened to... Obviously, we had ten speakers come up here with some varying viewpoints. The consistent, I guess, perception from those who are opposed is that they don't want to be in a city that has this. You are already in a city that has this. There are seventy-plus licenses in the city, and I don't know if any of those have affected your life in any way, or if you even knew that they existed. So there are good people in the city, there are good business owners, there are people who believe in this and believe in doing it the right way. And I think at the very least, they have earned some trust in the city, having been here for so many years now, and you haven't felt the effects of anything negative that I know of. So I think the proper thing to do here is allow the council to create those proper regulations, to allow the people that have been here, who are in good standing, to continue, you know, their efforts and what they truly believe in, rather than someone who's not been affected in any way taking that away from them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes those that wish to speak on public comment this evening. So we'll move to the discussion item. As we indicated at the last study session, City Council wanted more time to digest the information that was passed along at the last study session to talk, read, do whatever was needed to do to have a further discussion and possibly move forward or don't move forward. So this is our opportunity to speak and to make a decision. There won't be any vote this evening for those that are in the audience. This is not a voting session, this is just a study session. If there was going to be any vote, it would be in the regular City Council meeting at a future date. So, does anybody volunteer to go first? Do you want to move around the table? What's your pleasure?
I've run a loss for words, so...
Well, I think we know what you're going to say. You want to go this way?
I'll go the other way around.
Okay. Councilman Henderson.
All right. So I've gotten a lot of emails in the last couple days. People know this meeting was coming up, so of course, that always motivates people to send emails to give us their opinion. I... The few that I've gotten were against... We've already heard from the people that are for in previous meetings. I'm against anything related to marijuana in the city. And I understand we have seventy licenses currently in the city. Those seventy licenses are not in seventy locations. Brian, do we have a number of locations? I don't want to put you on the spot, but...
Not off the top of my head, not off the top of your head, or something. Thank you, though.
But it is significantly smaller number of actual buildings that house marijuana than there are licenses. In other words, several licenses can be inside one building. And of those seventy licenses and significantly smaller number of buildings, two have been raided by the police or by the feds already and made headlines. So it does significantly impact our brand, you know, tarnishes our brand. I don't think we need the message for our kids that, you know, we as a group of adults embrace marijuana grow operations. I understand, you know, medical marijuana has a place in that profession. I also understand there are bad actors in terms of doctors that prescribe marijuana for just about any ache or pain that you think you want to have. And, you know, I've seen those medical marijuana cards handed out. I could probably get one myself if I really wanted to. So I just don't think it's a fit for us. I don't think we need to embrace it. By us opting out or doing nothing, other communities will embrace it. They can grow marijuana wherever they want in the state of Michigan. We are not... By us opting out, we're not going to impact that industry whatsoever. They'll still be able to grow it and get that product out in the hands of people that do rightfully need it, regardless of what we do here in the city of Troy. So I'm an absolute opt-out advocate.
Thank you. Councilman Cunningham?
Well, I struggled with this, thought about it, both sides of the coin. We're talking about warehouses in a certain area that are typically not in residential areas. We're talking about warehouses that were empty, and they're being used... Now they're being used for a purpose of growing medical marijuana. My opinion is if we opt in for growth facilities only, of which we have sixty-plus already, you're going to be limiting the number of growers that you actually have, the number of... You're going to eliminate the bad actors, like the one gentleman said, and I think you'll have the better... You'll be dealing with better businesses. I'm not in favor of dispensaries, but I think if we don't opt in, I think we'll lose... These will be vacant buildings, and we'll lose, you know, that opportunity. Like it's been said, I mean, if we don't do it, other cities... If we opt out, other cities would... It's going to be coming anyway, so just where... Where it's going to be grown? It's being grown currently, like they said, sixty-plus buildings. And I just think if we regulate it, it can be, you know, not detrimental to the city.
Thank you. Councilman?
Are we ready? Yes. My take is this isn't an issue of whether medical marijuana should be legal or not illegal. That's been several years ago, as we discussed at the last meeting. My issue is when I look at this regulatory scheme brought to us from the state, it seems to me that the city of Troy does the bulk of the work to enforce this, while the state gets the bulk of the revenue from this. And I struggle to see how the revenue we would gain from this, the $5,000 fee we charge, maybe a little bit of the excise tax revenue we get, would cover, especially the first few years of adjusting, how it would cover the cost to us enforcing it with the police and other costs. And I... One resident mentioned a... And I, one resident mentioned let other cities stub their toe, and I kind of feel the same about that. Why don't we sit back, wait a year, see how this scheme fits these other cities? And I know businesses are dying to do business in Troy. I think we can sit back, wait, see how, what the effect is, and act then. So I would say neither opt in or opt out, just wait and see until some of the uncertainties are resolved. There's too much uncertainty right now for me. That's my take right now.
Councilman Moore?
Excellent. This is just a great conversation to be having. I really appreciate all the input. I'm pro-medical marijuana, let me be clear on that. I know I have loved ones who have benefited from being able to have access to it when regular chemical pharmaceuticals could not, helped them and in fact was hurting them. And they achieved great quality of life through it. That said, my wheelhouse is reputation management, brand management, and one of the members of the public hit on that very well. And this is what I've struggled with. I've met, I've been to a grow facility, I'm impressed with it, if I, being very honest, very impressed with it. But the city of Troy has this brand, and when the headlines come out, let's say we voted to opt in, what does that do for our brand? What does that do for, you know, this bedroom community that is really proud of being a family-friendly community and has been vocal at every turn about substance abuse and whatnot? There's the reality of what we're talking about and there's the perception of what we're talking about. And I'm stuck on the perception issues that this brings. In the meantime, the laws are a mess. The federal government sessions just came out with another statement. When I read what came from Michigan, I was looking for that. What will this be? Will this give us good guidance? Will this, I'm feeling less comfortable about the laws instead of more comfortable as we've studied this process. And we've been, as members of council, kicking this around, watching dialoguing offline even for months and months. There's a business in Troy that was interested in doing testing, talked to me a couple of years ago. Man owns a business here, lives here, thought this would be a great thing to do, we have the hospitals. He researched kind of the character, flavor, culture of the city and said, never mind, had even started to purchase equipment and sold it because he didn't see it as a fit with the city. That's what I'm struggling with, is that fit. And yeah, let the other communities stub their toes, kind of a thing. We, our police department and our city attorney are not sitting around with nothing to do. This is a ton of work to venture into this. What do our residents gain? What does our brand gain if we do this? Is this a place we want to lead? We stepped away and said we didn't want to be involved in fracking. We stepped away and said we don't want to do pond brokers. We stepped away and said to the hookah lounges, no, we need to restrict your hours because there's issues here. At all turns, we have been, our character and our DNA has been to protect and create safety, real and perceived, and that's what I'm stuck on. And that's the difficulty. People will still have access even if we, we don't have to do anything at this point. Maybe we can talk about that more, just waiting and seeing. I know business people need to know. But I'd be inclined to opt out if forced right now because of these perception challenges. That's what I'm saying.
Councilman Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you all for speaking today. I wasn't expecting to kind of state our position on this and this discussion at this point, but since that's what we're doing, we can kind of talk about that a little bit. I think you all, I think the difficulty with this subject for me is that every one of you have spoken so far, including every one of you in the audience, have said something that I agree with. And so it kind of puts me on both sides of the issue, and I struggle to find out what's the right thing, what's the real thing in my mind. A couple of things, you know, I also toured a facility here, and, you know, it's not what people expect, it's not, you know, someone's garage with dangerous things going on. It's a very, it's, you know, frankly, more professional than a lot of businesses in this town, cleaner and better. So I, there's no question that if done properly, it can't be done the right way. And I guess I should say, I, this isn't, again, not a conversation about the value or benefits of medical marijuana, that's a very separate conversation. And I think that that's not what we're doing. But I do also wonder, you know, this person said, you know, what is the, if we do opt in, what does this mean for the city of Troy and for its residents? And I think that's a question we should be answering and discussing in this conversation, what does it mean? And, you know, a lot of it's perception. And you raised great points with that, and I think I've had those similar thoughts. And, you know, but we also always do look at existing businesses and, you know, I've met with people who own industrial property here and who, you know, this has been a good thing for their business and it keeps our industrial vacancy rate low and it keeps things going both ways. But what does it mean? We spend money on our city budget each year with the Troy Committee Coalition for the prevention of drug abuse, and Nancy was here tonight talking again. And, you know, I think that it does raise questions of if we, as a city, are saying, let's opt in with anything related to marijuana, it does make us look like potentially we're hypocritical for doing that. And I worry about that perception. Maybe that's a timing issue, maybe it's about rushing, maybe we don't need to rush in because if we wait and see what happens, then we'll be better lined to know what perception comes from other communities, what the rules get changed to, what gets enforced at the federal level and what doesn't. But, you know, I hear about, you know, what Attorney General Sessions has put out and what they're talking about at the federal level and what we had, I can't remember her name, it's escaping me.
Shelley Edgar.
She was here last time and she told us where we were and gave us all the emergency rules that frankly did have left more questions than answers for many of us, I think. And I just don't know if we are at the place where we need to be opting in and embracing something when by all other intents and purposes, the city of Troy is doing really well from a business standpoint, we're not starving for a new industry. We are doing just fine. I don't know that we want to be known as that community in Oakland County. We're already, there's a magnifying glass on us anyway for lots of reasons, you know, we, people pay attention to what happens in Troy. And as someone with kids in this community and I, you know, we, parents are concerned about this stuff. And I hear a lot about it, and I know you have grandkids, and you're worried about that perception, and you have grandkids too, Mayor, and everyone talks about it. And I just, I don't know, I understand the reason we need to protect those who invested in this city already with their caregiver grow operations in the hope that we do something bigger. It's not fair to leave you hanging and to, you know, keep kicking things down the road. But I, I just don't know that we're there. And, you know, I, the attorney from Monroe Oak, I didn't hear how your last name was pronounced, so forgive me, but your name was Dave. You talked about the voter initiative and, you know, that used to maybe scare me a little bit, but we just went through that and, you know, I don't know. I don't know if it's really, I kind of think that if you put it out to the people in the city of Troy, you'd be surprised that they're not jumping to have more marijuana brought in, even with stricter regulations, which I believe we could have if we opted in. I believe there could be a stricter ordinance in some regards. But the other thing that really is, I'm struggling with now is I hear two different arguments but coming from the same side. I hear, you know, oh, there's already marijuana here, it's already going on here and being grown here, and it's not bothering you, so it's not going away, so you might as well regulate it. But then I hear the same side saying, and if you don't opt in, you're going to leave and decimate your industrial vacancy rate. So are they going to leave or are they going to stay? I don't know, you know? And, I mean, I think that that's, again, leads to us maybe, the timing just doesn't feel right to me. And so I'm not going to state how I would vote right now, I don't think that's what we're supposed to do in study sessions. But I'm still having questions that don't feel like I'm getting the right answers. I'm not sure they can get answers from anybody in this room or, you know, maybe we need more of a discussion. But hey, it doesn't feel right to make any firm decisions right now.
Thank you. Councilman, or Mayor Proton, Peter.
To me, this isn't a debate about whether medical marijuana is effective or not. I think there's a large body about this that indicates it is effective for numerous conditions. What this boils down to me really are two different things. One is the state law, which I think leaves much to be desired in terms of clarity. And I think it was Mr. Wurpitzki that had made reference to loopholes. And I feel the more that I read that, the legislation, the more uncomfortable I am with it. And given what we've recently gone through with billboards, Monster Garage, et cetera, I feel like the opportunity is right at a state level for loopholes to be found and there to be unintended consequences. And I don't want to be the city that leads in finding those unintended consequences. The other issue that I have is just inherently the conflict between the federal law and the state law. And, you know, it was just over a month ago that we had this study session, and the municipal lawyer from Pumpkin Cooney, whose name now I can't remember, you know, said, oh, you know, we have reason to believe that, you know, they won't go after states to have legislation for medical marijuana. And not two weeks or so ago, the, you know, the, you know, the feds have indicated that there may be reason to think that they could go after states for any reason. And we've taken such care and such pride in our city being run so effectively and efficiently and doing government the best, I feel like we would be putting ourselves in a position to not be doing government the best because we'd be causing chaos with having to deal with loopholes that aren't closed at the state level, but potentially licenses that have been granted, and what do we do? And all that chaos costs man-hours, tax dollars to deal with. Troy's economic position is pretty favorable. Our favorable position isn't dependent on the caregivers, the growers, the 70 or so that we already have in the city, you know? So I hear, well, they could leave or others may migrate out of the city. I understand that there would be an economic impact, but I don't think it'd be, it would decimate our position. I think it's pretty strong. So at this point, I'm not feeling comfortable enough to say that this is something we should go forward with. I think we need to potentially reevaluate after other cities have actually dealt and been through this for a little while. And I understand that there's a risk that we're going to lose out, you know, if we were to opt in in a year, two years, you know, we may lose out on opportunities to, you know, or to Flint or to Detroit. But at this point, given our city's values, what we, what we take pride in, at this point, I'm not comfortable moving forward to opt in.
Thank you. I'm not sure that we're any different than we were at the last council. I'm not sure exactly when this council is going to be prepared to make that final decision one way or the other, but I think I made my points at the last meeting. And, believe me, I've listened, I've watched, I've done my homework, and there isn't anybody in this city that would ever have thought someday that I would be in favor of medical marijuana or any type of marijuana. And I agree with Nancy. Marijuana's a gateway drug, just like alcohol is, just like prescription drugs are, just like some other things that we have. But I think, counsel, at some point, you're going to have to publicly make a decision on what you do here for the businesses that are in our city. And I do think it eventually will have an effect on them, and I think that should be a concern. So what I've heard tonight is that council isn't prepared to move. The only thing that I would suggest, that I think needs to be done, is, I know a lot of cities are looking at doing ordinances to see what those ordinances are going to be for opting in or not opting in or, to me, that's the one unanswered question that I have right now is, can these ordinances be written very strict and can they be limited? And I understand the concerns about staff, putting the burden on staff, but I really think, for me, I need to know what kind of teeth you can put in an ordinance to make it satisfy, satisfy more than even us. And until I see that, I've seen some, but if we have to, if we have to hire outside counsel to assist, because I know there are some experts out there, I would like to see what those ordinances, because someday you may, maybe six months from now, if you want to revisit this again, it would be good to have the ordinances already done and replaced. And then I think what you also need to do, counsel, is decide, do you want another study session somewhere else down the road? Do you want us to take a look at, do you want the law department to take a look at putting ordinances together, one way or the other? Because my understanding from our law department is that no matter if you opt in or do not opt in, we need to do something about ordinances.
As far as the medical marijuana and the caregiver portion?
Correct.
That is correct, and that will happen. We will be writing proposed amendments to you. Thank you very much.
Councilman Baker?
Can I ask a dumb question? Does an opt-out ordinance say we are opting out, period? I mean, is that basically it?
Well, way back in April of 2017, when we first addressed this issue, we had proposed an ordinance for your consideration that did go through and articulated some of the reasons why you may have wished to opt out. And actually, that was based on a council referral, we were taking direction, and that's why it was phrased in that way. And at that point in time, you wanted to get more information. So we had a couple of study sessions to provide that information. The caregiver portion of it, there are some changes that can be made to deal and to address some of those issues, but we didn't necessarily want to move forward with those until we knew what council's decision was on whether or not you were going to move forward rather than with the facilities portion of it, because we could have tied them together and, you know, rather than doing two separate ones. I'm sensing that there's not a whole lot of support to move forward at this point in time. And we do have a moratorium that is valid until April, so on the caregiver operations, so that, so in order to get the information to council and informational item first, I looked at that today, that'll have to be the first meeting in March, and then it will be for action on the second meeting in March for the caregiver facilities only portion.
Councilman Harrison?
And to be clear, the caregiver portion is the 70 that we already have in Troy that were discussed?
Correct. And I don't know once, you know, because there are facilities that, they say that the state is going to publicly start issuing licenses in March as well to those other communities that have expressly opt in, opted in. I don't know if some of our caregiver facilities, because you can't do both, you can't be a caregiver and also be, have a facility grow operation, so we may move some of the facilities in the city, the caregiver facilities in the city of Troy. So it may be lower than 70. So it may be lower than 70.
Counselor.
I, I liked what you were just discussing there. I do think it's useful to, not just the caregiver ordinance, but to investigate what other cities are doing with their facility ordinances. And I would like to revisit this later this year personally, but I don't want to explicitly opt out. I just want to wait and see, maybe in nine months or so, take a look at what happened with the cities that support it and maybe we'll have more information and make a better decision. That's my take.
Are there any others, any other council member that thinks that we should at least explore an ordinance at this point? So is, is and, Counselor Baker.
I understand what your thinking is going from that and I always, information's important to all of us, but I don't know that coming out of this meeting, the, the result should be we're instructing our city attorney or contracting out to draft an ordinance. I think that something gets lost in that messaging. So I, if there is a way to temper that by valuing it somehow with, I mean, that's why I was asking about the opt-out aspect of it. I don't, I just don't think that the, I don't think what we hear today is, "Let's start looking at an opt-in ordinance," even for informational purposes. I think that that sends the wrong message to the community and to the businesses as well. And so, if, I would support having that information, as I've told many of the people that have emailed me and I've talked to. And I think one person has sent me a, a sample ordinance and I've appreciated that. I wouldn't mind reading that, but I think that, even though we don't take action in here, but I, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's the right, do you know what I'm saying? If, and it's not about message and perception, but it is about that. But, I mean, it'd be nice if we could see, I'm not exactly sure, but, sorry.
Anyone else besides, Counselor.
I, I think we're, we're thinking along the same lines where it may be instruct, away from my, it may be instructive to see what other cities' opt-in ordinances look, look like and see if that provides some level of comfort to, to where there's some misgivings or some discomfort with, with opting in. And also understanding, you know, for those that did opt in, what problems they may or may not be having or what good things are happening. So I would agree, I'm not sure, I, I want to, to start drafting an ordinance now, but I would like to understand what other city ordinances look like and if we got to the point where we were to opt in, we have a basis for, for where to start potentially or maybe where we want to make it start.
Counselor.
Do we want to revisit that in March then, when we're talking about the redo, looking at the ordinances for the caregiver?
I just, and I'm, I'm hearing you here, I don't want to have a lot of extra work to do because, believe me, we've got a lot of other issues that we have to address. As far as the, you know, if Council, what Mayor Proton Abraham, you said that you wanted to see what some of the issues are. We won't know what some of the issues are because the state is not issuing licenses, we think. March is going to be the earliest that they're going to start. So as far as, I mean, of course, I have, you know, library of, of some of the ordinances that have been adopted. I've been reviewing this, I'm, I'm well-versed in what some of these communities are doing. So I can get that to you. I guess the question is, what is the timing of that? And again, I'd like to not have to do something, you know, that we're just going to have to revisit and, and redo again in, in a couple of months, so.
Perhaps it is nine months where you've at least had, you know, few months where licenses have been granted and whatever baby steps have been taken or stumbling blocks have been tripped over have, have happened and, you know, from that. So maybe it's nine months, maybe it's fourth quarter of this year.
Maybe after the election, if the recreational is on the ballot too. I mean, I, no one even mentioned that today, but yeah, that's possibly going to be on the ballot. We need to see what happens with that.
Counselor Anderson.
There are two separate issues. One is the, the inordinance for opting in or, or whatnot. And the other is the, the fact that we have a perpetual moratorium going on on the, on the, and I, I think that has to expire at one point or another, we have to do something. So that's, that's one ordinance. And I think that we have to act on.
March.
In March. So I, I just want people to understand that even though we may be talking about an ordinance, it's not that we're embracing this or anything. We need, we have to do something to get past this moratorium situation that we have, and that's by making an ordinance.
So I think I'm hearing it from the consensus here that you want to just put this off for nine months? Just one, two, three, four?
For a.
I, yes.
Period.
I don't know, Mayor, I don't know if nine months is, well, I, I think, I think you, you owe it to, to the people that are here. Are you, you know, do you want to talk about it more? Do you want to not do anything? Some of you don't want to do anything at this point, the consensus is.
Counselor.
We're twisted up in the chaos that this subject is. This is exactly the trouble with it. You can see us struggling as council members. We don't want to leave businesses hanging. We don't, we don't want to lead, I'm tired of stepping in. But the, the truth is, it seems like this is still getting molded. And, you know, you hear cities say, "Well, we're opting in because we think it's going to make our city safer." You know, by opting in and regulating this and whatnot, I'm failing to see that and can't sell that idea, frankly, because I can't see it. So, you know, apologies, but we're caught. We, we don't know, we don't, I think what, I think consensus is, we don't want to be a lead city on this. I, I think that's the consensus. There's nothing that our residents gain by taking a lead and stepping into this. I contrast it with when we okayed doing soundless mowers. Remember the solar mower, you know, where we thought there would be a benefit to the people who live near that mowing? I can't find the benefit. And so, spinning our wheels and resourcing it, I think we, it's a, this, I don't know if it's nine months, if it's a year, if it's a year and a half, if it's, you know, we have our March deadline.
That's a separate issue.
It's a separate issue. I don't know, I don't know. Is there advice for us from experts?
I, I think the four, the four consensus here to, to not, to just do anything at this point are the ones that have to, to say, "What do you, what do you want to do?" Do you want to, is it the consensus here to just do nothing and then wait for, wait for something else to happen?
I just want to observe what happens with the other cities. Till after the election.
So you don't want to do anything till after the election?
Well, till we get useful data from.
Counselor. You don't want to do anything till when?
I want more advice on what that should be. I don't know what that, I don't know what the magic.
Counselor.
Give me more time. If you wanted to bring a, a referral, we could vote on it and discuss it at an open meeting where we voted on things, but that's, that's not what we're doing here. So I mean, I could make a decision sooner than nine months, but, you know, I'm not going to say I need nine months to look at these cities or until what we find out with recreational. It's not about that for me. I'm not ready to make a decision tonight and to provide guidance to say, "Okay, draft an ordinance," or not.
So just, just don't take any action tonight?
Fair enough. And that's not to leave anybody in the wind, but this is a big deal for our city. And I think that, you know, there's a full house here tonight, but there's other people who care and are paying attention and couldn't be here tonight. And we, I know, it seems like we're taking a long time, but this is our second meeting on this, where we've had open discussion, maybe our third, because we had one with Alan Moss in the beginning. And this is something, I'm sorry, if I may, this is something, you know, these are drugs to a lot of people. And all they hear marijuana, they hear drugs, and you're bringing drugs into our city. I don't think it behooves anybody at this table to look like we're rushing into anything. And I, I'm sorry, I mean, I mean, I don't know if it's six months, nine months or a year.
I don't know what the time is.
But it's, it's not about a number of months. It's about, you know, this is, I've heard it called the Wild, Wild West of the industry. And, you know, trying to craft an ordinance or come up with a, trying to be the straight-laced people in the Wild, Wild West is really difficult. So, except, yes, there's four of us that are saying, "Don't take action tonight," I guess.
You just want to leave it at that then?
Sounds like we're going to talk about it again, discuss it in April, May, or whenever.
March.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's on an ordinance, that's not.
Right, but it's going to come up then, I would, would imagine.
How many licenses have been approved? I, I've heard that there was a very low interest. Maybe I read an news article or something.
I, I don't think any of them, I mean, they're still going through the process. And the state will likely issue its first licenses in, in March is what I, what I heard.
Okay.
Okay, I think the consensus is not do anything.
There's too many unknowns. For, for me, it's not time-based, it's when, when do we have more data about what the feds are going to do now that they've issued the decree from, you know, the, the.
Well, how about if we have a study session before the ordinance and talk more? The meeting before the, the.
In March?
In March.
There may be more insight at that point that we could talk about.
Maybe before you, we'll get some more insight by then.
But I don't think it's just the four of us that are, yeah, not jumping up and down about this, Mayor. I mean, I.
Nobody's jumping up and down. It's a pretty complex issue.
But that's the point.
That's the point.
The point is, some of us are ready to, to move forward and some of us are not, one way or the other, opt in or opt out. But if you don't want to take any action, if you don't want to say what you want to do, it's difficult for us to even talk about this.
If you wanted to take action, I'll vote right now.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that.
And there's a way my vote will go. So know that. I, I'm, I'm not opposed to taking action.
But I don't think a study session in March is going to do us any good. If they want more data.
Part of my concern is what loopholes are going to be found by the cities that do, that have opted in. And we're not going to know that in March. I don't know when we're going to know it, but it won't be March if that's when they're first granting licenses.
Okay, so if we won't take any action, we'll wait to hear from. And four.
Anyone is, anyone wants to bring a council referral at any time to actually have a vote? I mean, I think that we could probably work towards that.
Thank you so much for coming this evening. Certainly, we welcome any input, the consensus is that there will be no action taken from this council. So thank you guys for coming this evening. We are adjourned.